...meeting of the April 3rd, City Council meeting to order. Let me give you a few little instructions before we start. First off, thank you everybody for attending. We really appreciate it when folks come out to attend your City Council meeting. We don't have a lot of folks here this evening. It looks like the rain kept some of them away. We've got some special guests here this evening. Giving our invocation this evening is Pastor Larry Hall of West Hills Baptist Church out on 11W there and just in the edge of Bristol, Tennessee. Pastor Hall's been ministering to his flock for the last 15 years out there. We appreciate you Larry and your wife Janice for being here this evening. Two other special guests this evening. Giving the pledge of allegiance this evening, we have from Tennessee High School. We've got Megan Dolan, daughter of Michelle Dolan. She's a 10th grader at Tennessee High School. And with her this evening, we have Sarah Zandi, who is a 6th grader at Haynesville. They're going to be leading us in the pledge this evening and we're awfully glad to have them. Awfully glad to have also Roger Brown coming in in the back there. When the Harold Coolier is here, folks know we had a council meeting. So, we're glad to have you. And folks, make sure that you silenced your cell phones. You're going to have an opportunity during the course of the meeting to speak on anything that comes up on the agenda. You're also going to have an opportunity to speak on something that's not on the agenda when I just call for comments from the audience. We've got Kelly Graham in the back, Chair of our Planning Commission. We've got Mike Ketron here, who's served, I think, a couple of our commissions, including the Library Board. Anyway, folks, we're glad to have everyone with us. And if you would, Pastor Hall, if you'll come forward. And folks, would you stand with me for our invocation and pledge?
May we pray. Father, we praise you and thank you that we can call upon your name. We thank you for establishing human government. We thank you for our country and the greatness of it in giving us such a land with freedom and Lord with pride that we thank you for it. We thank you for our forefathers that came into this area years ago. We thank you for establishing our town, our city, and having the foresight and the vision and the aspiration of a good place to live. We thank you for our community. We thank you for our city. And truly, Lord, that we thank you that it is a good place to live and from the fortitude and the moral values of those that have gone before us. And Father, you've admonished us to pray for our leaders. And I thank you for them. I thank you for each one that has a place of leadership in this city. I ask it for your hand to be upon them. Give them the wisdom, the understanding, the wisdom and the way that to make a decision that for the people, for those of us that are of this city. And help them, O God, that to have the courage to do that which is right. We praise you for them, thank you for them, and for the times at which that they may feel that they're not appreciated. Father, we pray for them and give them that understanding that they're your appointed vessels. Bless them and use them and may our community truly be a great place to live. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Ladies, we certainly thank you and Pastor Hall, we thank you. We usually try to have a youth group or someone to give the pledge and it's awfully nice tonight to have two of our own, Ben's daughter and Michelle's daughter. We also have, in the back with Sarah, we have Deborah Zandi, who's joined us this evening. And you know Peg Staden is here almost every single council meeting, Joel's wife Peg. So, we really appreciate having our family members join us in these meetings. They get an awful lot of city government at home and every once in a while, they even come out for the meetings. We appreciate y'all. Ms. Terry, I think we'd better call the roll and start the meeting.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Here.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Staden?
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Here.
Councilman Zandi?
Here.
Thank you, Terry. Ms. Broughton, do we have any agenda additions or deletions?
No, sir. The agenda is ready for action and distributed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Broughton. We have an unusually short agenda today. First up on the agenda, Proclamations and Recognizations. The first proclamation is for Bristol Arbor Day, Earth Day, and Vice Mayor Joel Staden is going to read this to us now.
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for our wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, given us paper products, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of the business area and beautify our community. And whereas Arbor Day, Earth Day is a unique celebration focusing not on the past but on the future, and by planting the small tree, we affirm our faith in the future. And whereas the city wishes to thank the Tree Board members for its efforts in helping to improve the quality of life in Bristol. Now therefore, David Shoemaker, the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim April 20th, 2012 as Bristol Arbor Day, Earth Day in the city of Bristol and urge all citizens to plant trees and commend them for their efforts in reforesting the city this third day of April, 2012.
I think accepting today is Terry Nevear and Ken King with BTS.
I don't have a prepared speech, but just on behalf of the Tree Board, I would also like to express our thanks to the interest that the City Council puts in and Mayor Jeff Broughton puts in, making our city a beautiful place to live. You drive up and down the parkway now with all the trees and vegetation that's blooming is just real pretty. Or if you visit any of our city parks and see all the work that our city departments put in putting the trees, it's just a real nice place to live and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you for the recognition. Also want to remind you, we'll be celebrating our Arbor Day celebration at Anderson Elementary School on April 20th at 10:00 PM. We'll have some of the kids come out and we'll plant a tree. And then we'll be celebrating our Tree City USA 24th year. We've been told we got the award and we hope to get that recognition that day. So, we hope you can come out and join us.
All right. Thank you, Terry. That's 10:00 AM, right?
10:00 AM. What did I say, PM? I can't read my writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry and Ken. The next proclamation we have is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month and Councilman Ben Zandi is going to read that now.
Whereas April 2012 marks the 44th anniversary of the enactment of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1968 seeks to eliminate discrimination in opportunities and to affirmatively make housing choices available to all Americans. And whereas the ongoing efforts to ensure equal housing opportunity for all citizens is not the exclusive role of the federal government, but also requires state and local government efforts to combat housing discrimination as well. And whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee utilizes the Department of Community Development to implement an effective and responsible fair housing program. And whereas it is the intent of this City Council to encourage unified efforts of federal, state and local governments in promoting housing opportunities for all Americans. Now therefore, David Shoemaker, mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as the Fair Housing Month in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, this third day of April, 2012.
Accepting this evening is our Director of Community Development, Miss Sherri Brown.
Thank you. I'll just take a moment to thank the council for your continued support of fair housing in the community and the provision of housing choice for our citizens. Appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Sherri. We don't have any other presentations this evening and we don't have any public hearings this evening. So, now I'll call on anyone in attendance who would like to speak to the council, whether it's about something on the agenda or anything else. Now would be the opportunity to come and speak your piece. Do we have anybody who would wish to do that this evening? Hearing none, then we'll move right on to the next item, the appointments to Community Development Advisory Committee. Ms. Broughton, would you tell us about that?
I will. We have two appointments to, we actually have three vacancies to serve on the Community Development Advisory Committee. It is for a, each of those three positions will, once appointed, will serve a three-year term ending April 30th, 2015. We only received two applications by the time of our cutoff. And the two candidates that are before you for consideration this evening are Ella Kane and Sylvia Ketron. So, if you would mark your ballots for up to two members and send them, pass them this way, we'll publicly read the results.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Is there anyone on council who would like to speak on behalf of either one of these individuals who are already serving on this board?
I will. And I'd like to say that this is each of theirs first term, but I might be wrong. It might be...
These all, each of them are incumbents.
Right. But I don't know if they've served more than one term.
Oh, I don't know.
I think Ella Kane, I think it's one term. I think Sylvia's one term or part of another term or whatever. But anyway, they have great attendance. Sylvia is active in the community and works in one of our downtown retail stores and participates a lot there. And Ella Kane is also on our Housing Authority Board and very dedicated and learning lots about community development and housing, which is a big job to do. And she's very, very interested, very dedicated. So, both of them, great active members of that board.
Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Broughton.
For our position on the Community Advisory Committee, Ms. Dolan votes for Ms. Kane and Ms. Ketron. Mr. Shoemaker votes for Ms. Kane and Ms. Ketron. Mr. Staden votes for Ms. Kane and Ms. Ketron. Mr. Zandi votes for Ms. Kane and Ms. Ketron. And Ms. Fire Robin as well. Ms. Kane and Ms. Ketron, each of whom are reappointed to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. We really appreciate the service by these two ladies. Folks, we have so many boards and commissions, we're always looking for members to help us do what needs to be done in the city and we appreciate those individuals that do step forward and volunteer. It's just, without their help, we just could not do all the many jobs that would have to be done in the city. So, we do appreciate their service.
I would add Ella Kane was a graduate, I believe, of our first municipal academy.
And that's why she's doing such a great job, Margaret.
Yep. Yep. There you go. She got involved after doing that.
Excuse me. We don't have any new ordinances this evening on first reading. We do have an item next on adoption of ordinances, second reading, ordinance 12-2. Mr. Broughton.
Ordinance number 12-2 is an ordinance to amend Section 34-26A of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Fire Prevention Codes. This item that's before you this evening will adopt the 2012 edition of the National Fire Protection, or NFPA, National Fire Codes. It's a series of codes that are embodied in 18 volumes. This new, the new codes, the 2012 edition of the codes will supplant 2009 additions that we currently have in place and will be placed in replacement, obviously. The NFPA codes are used in our fire prevention and inspection program and their purpose is to ensure that existing buildings comply with code requirements related to fire prevention and safety. As you can tell, this is the 2012 where they're replacing the 2009. Well, these are issued on a three-year cycle and so you'll be expecting to see this come before you again in 2015. It changes nothing in terms of the effect on an existing building, but for any new building that's constructed, after its adoption, the new code will apply to those newly constructed buildings. With your, this has been recommended to you by the staff and we happy to answer questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Is there any question or clarification needed from staff? Anyone on council having any additional questions? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening wish to speak to council on this matter? Any comments from anybody in attendance? We have Chief Bob Barnes and Jack Spurgeon from the Fire Department with us. Gentlemen, either one of you wish to weigh in? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Joel. And Ben, thank you for the second. We do have a motion and a second now. Is there additional discussion by council? Hearing none, I think we're ready for the vote, Terry.
Vice Mayor Staden?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, Resolutions. Resolution 12-25, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real property. Mr. Broughton, tell us about that.
Yeah. This is, as, the property that we are asking City Council to authorize the purchase is property that was just recently acquired by Mark Byington. Mark's in the audience. Somewhere, he was.
He's back in the back.
Still there. There he is, Mark. Anyway, Mark, the property in question, flip to a screen, there you go. This is the property commonly known as the, well, this is the Cortram property at the corner of Oakwood and Georgia. Next slide there, Sherri, give me orient. There you go. Track 1, the property was subdivided by the current owner. Track 1 is about a 12.3 acre track on the, I don't know what direction that would is. I'll say south, on the south portion of the larger track. The company Aurora Hardwoods put that up to auction in the month of March and Mr. Byington ended up buying it for $55,000 with a 10% auctioneer's commission. It was not a planned purchase, I think is fair to say. And when we became aware that Mr. Byington acquired it and that it wasn't really in his business plans to have it for his use, we approached Mark and asked if he'd be willing to sell it to the city for what he has in the property, plus $1,000 above that for his time and effort and turmoil in transacting and acquiring that property and selling it to us, which he has agreed to do. So, the action tonight that you're being asked to approve is to authorize the purchase of the property for $61,500 plus whatever other miscellaneous expenses were incurred by Mr. Byington to close on the previous sale and in turn for us to acquire through this acquisition. The, you know, what are we going to do with it? That's a good question. One of the objectives that we've got in the draft 2013 goals, and I'm sure it'll be in the final product, is for the city to make a land use determination and future use of that site. And by us controlling it and having ownership of it, we can direct that in any direction the City Council finds to make sense. Maybe the last comment on this, the, there wasn't an environmental assessment done on this property as we might typically do, but we did check with TDEC when all of this came together to check what they knew about the property. And through investigation, we've come to learn of some underground storage tanks, fuel storage tanks, that were there at one time when we're properly closed out. In fact, I'm not even sure if they're on Track 1 or Track 2, as well as a chemical, a dip tank that was also somewhere on the site and was closed years ago and was removed and properly closed out. So, as best we can tell from everything we know, it's, the site is clean, but for 12 acres for $61,000, if there's a little bit of work we have to do, it's really still a great price for what it brings to us. For potential use, 12 acres right in the middle of town and for that amount of money is something we thought we shouldn't pass and it's recommended to you.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there any additional clarification or questions to staff, by council? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening wish to address council on this particular matter? Seeing no one, council, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Joel. And Ben for the second. Now, we have a motion and a second. Council, is there some additional discussion? Joel, would you like to weigh in on that? This is your neighborhood.
Yes, this is my neighborhood. This property became vacant four years ago, approximately, four years ago when there was a fire at Thanksgiving. And probably two years ago, it was rezoned to residential, which we were happy for. And I'm sure all the neighbors were happy for it too. And I'm just glad that it's becoming property of the city. What we're going to do with it, we're not sure, but it's a good investment and I'm glad we're making it.
Thank you, Joel. Who else would like to weigh in?
I'd just like to thank Mark Byington for having the foresight to be there and to purchase it. And also, even if it wasn't in your business plan, you certainly could have made it in your business plan. And I think it's an awfully nice opportunity that you've provided the city. So, really appreciate that.
Who else?
I would just like to say that I think we should be very prudent in what we do with the property. $61,000 is a lot of money and just think that we should definitely do something with it that is going to be a very good return on investment.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? Let me echo Mr. Byington. Let me echo what Margaret said. Thank you for helping us to acquire this piece of property. When the Cortram burned and left this, for want of a better word, mess in the middle of the neighborhood, I know the neighbors around there, that was a struggle. That's right across the street from your business and you had to look at it a long time. We finally got that site cleaned up, they have, with our encouragement, got that site cleaned up. And you've got nearly 12 and a half nice, flat acres right in the middle of a neighborhood. This could be a huge boom to that neighborhood in terms of residential housing. Sherri Brown and our planning department knows that several of us have worn you out talking about uses over there. Every once in a while, folks, an opportunity that comes along that the city just needs to step up and make sure that a piece of property or downtown building or something is acquired so then the best use can happen. Prime example is Shelby Square. Wonderful office complex and some more things happening there. King Building on State Street. The city stepped forward and I know we got a few complaints from folks, what are we doing buying an old building downtown? But go down to 620 State now and look at what an economic boom to downtown, that building and those restaurants and the other events down there around that building. Every once in a while, we just have to step forward and make sure, we're not in the land holding business, but sometimes we just need to hold a piece of property till the right thing can be done with it. And Mr. Byington, thank you for helping us have that opportunity and look forward to some sort of development there that is a big plus to that neighborhood and really can help property values and that hold in the area out there. So, anyway, with that, Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Staden?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
And folks, with that, that is the end of our regular agenda. We've moved on now to the consent agenda, only three items on that. Mr. Broughton, would you read that for us, please?
The items on the consent agenda include the minutes of the March 6th City Council meeting, the minutes of the March 20th City Council Work Session, and includes Resolution 12-26, which awards a contract for auditing services.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any council member would like to pull to discuss or change? Hearing none, we vote these as a group, so if there is a, and do so then without discussion. Is there a motion from a council member?
Move to second.
We'll give you that one, Ben, and Margaret, you got the second. Thank you, Ben and Margaret. We've got a motion and a second, Ben. Terry, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Staden?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item up is City Manager's report, and Dr. Lilly, don't think I've forgotten you now, I'm coming to you. I think you snuck in and I didn't see you or something there, but, Mr. Broughton, if you'll have at it there.
Well, just like the rest of the meeting is short, so are my comments. I have nothing to say other than we do have a couple of vacancies that are still opportunities for anybody that'd like to serve their community. One is on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. That position is open, as is another position on the Community Development Advisory Committee. And in addition, we have a position on the Sullivan County Board of Equalization. All three of those positions, all three of those boards will be with candidates submitting applications or letters of interest. Those will show up on your April meeting for formal consideration. Other than that, I'll, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Members of council, any comments?
Several. You want me to go first or you want Dr. Lilly or save me?
Dr. Lilly, we always appreciate you coming. Dr. Lilly, our superintendent of Bristol, Tennessee City Schools, and I know that if I don't call you up, Margaret will. So, tell us what you've been doing there at the school system. Y'all just finished spring break, right?
We did. We had a nice spring break and now we are ready to get back and work hard. TCAPs are coming up at the end of this month and I would like to thank Mrs. Fire Robin and Mr. Staden for coming to our TCAP test talk workshop at Vance today. They got to see a preview of what TCAPs are going to be like for the students and can probably attest that the rigor is certainly there in our curriculum nowadays. So, thank you for participating in that. Would also like to share with the council that we continue to try to cultivate some partnerships. We continue to work with Eastmans, Putting Children First Program. We're getting ready to kick off another round of Eastman Scholar Mathletes, and that is actually focused on providing some intensive professional development for our math teachers. We've had lots of teachers go through that program and it includes two weeks at ETSU over the summer. And at the conclusion of that, Eastman pays for up to $700 worth of math materials for the teachers to use in their classroom. So, we're tickled about that, that we are continuing that partnership. And we have also recently started working with Electromechanical Corporation. Those folks were nice enough to invite us to tour their facilities, to see what type of skills that they can use in their industry. And we had them over to Tennessee High and they came through and looked at our Career Technical Education, or CTE, program and are working with us in advisory capacity to really make sure that we're offering the programs that will best benefit our own students but also the community. And we are open to other businesses and industries also serving in that advisory capacity, which actually supports the city's economic strategic plan. So, we're happy about that. Speaking of strategic plans, the school system is reviewing and updating our own strategic plan, the 24th of... plan, the 24th of this month. So, we've got a lot of things going on, it's busy, but it's, it's a good time in the school system, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lily. Appreciate having, having you with us this evening. I recognize Ms. Wolf from Evoque Library came in. Would you like to take the opportunity to tell us what's going on with our library? We'd love, we'd love to hear from you. While she's moving up, is there any other member of council like to?
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, mine is probably going to be longer than hers, so we'll just wait for her.
I'll look at, and, Dr. Lily, I think we have a Rhone Scholar this year from Tennessee High, is that correct? Maddie Gilmer, who just received the Rhone Scholarship, which means full tuition to ETSU, I believe, and that's sponsored by the Nice Wonger Foundation, is that correct? So, want to congratulate Tennessee High and Ms. Gilmer.
Well, thank you all very much. I've been at the Evoque Library now for about six months, I would think, and I have been with the Bristol Public Library System for around 23 years. And it's rather exciting down there. We are a small branch, but we're, we're basically making, I think, a little bit of an imprint. We're trying to emphasize being a community library. We've been getting so many different types of activities. I'm a notary, so I do free notary down there, for instance. We've started a teen club down there. We have got some of the senior citizens groups that are coming in from both Broadmoor, and in fact, tomorrow I'm going to be going up to talk to the folks at Grand Court. And we're doing programs with them, kind of on a monthly basis, where in which we're able to, we do a controversy in a movie, like Amelia Earhart, what really happened, for instance, that type of thing. So, I've got a lot of different things. We're having a big Easter egg hunt tomorrow, as a matter of fact, for the kids in our story time. And in addition to that, we have a very active friends group. They are, have been dedicated to that little library for many, many years, and they're, they're wonderful folks, they have been very supportive, as well as our library board has been down there. In addition, most folks think that all that we do is really check out books, we have movies. I'm starting Instant Book Club type of a thing, where in which all we need to do is add readers. Fixing up some packs, where in which it includes several books for a book club, and it's going to have discussion questions and this type of thing, so they're going to be available in addition to just books and movies that can be checked out. I've got a large collection of movies, we're adding to it all the time, and our, our children's department has been very active, too. I would love for, for you all to come down. We have a lady, she dresses up in an old period costume, we call her Granny Sue. She's elderly, but she does our story time. And she'll sit in a rocking chair, and the kids love it, they have a ball. We're planning a summer reading club that's going to have a lot of activities, that's going to include an adult reading club, as well as a teen, and a children's reading club, which is an increase from what we have done in the past. We're expanding it quite a bit. We've been very active, trying to think, please come on down. We're looking at, I've also gotten a Wii, so we're going to be doing some type of computerized programming, too, for, for some of the younger folks that's going to be acting up or coming up soon.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf, we appreciate all you do. And for somebody who, who hadn't planned on coming and talking to us this evening, you did a great job, you could.
Well, thank you.
Off the cuff, very, very nice. We, we appreciate all your hard work. There was, a, a few years ago, there was a rumor, and I'm, I don't even know how it started, that, that we might close the Evoque branch, and we learned real quick that some of our senior ladies in this community would, would run us out of town on a rail pretty quick if anything happened to Evoque Library, so we appreciate, appreciate you and appreciate all of them. All right, thank you. Mr. Zandi, I think you wanted to weigh in.
Yes. Well, just wanted to let you know that we have a confirmed date for our next car show coming to Bristol, that would be August 10th, that we're going to close downtown, and we're going to call it Hot Bristol Night. And we will have hopefully over 500 cars, and it will start at 5:00 PM all the way through 9:00 PM, so mark your calendars and hopefully show up. And I'm also working on a healthy community festival that's going to happen downtown. We're working with local farmers and Appalachian Sustainable Development to hopefully close downtown and have our farmers come and have a booth and assign a chef to each farmer, and start teaching our citizens how to eat local, and, and eat healthy, and how to prepare the food, and we're hoping to do that this summer, and that would be our first community healthy eating festival. And let you know, three soccer clubs have combined into one, including our local soccer club here in Bristol, and they are looking for a few fields to have tournaments and bring in business to our town, and I'm glad to see the white top getting a facelift on their field, so hopefully we can attract new businesses from Knoxville and Asheville and South Carolina to come to Bristol for our tournaments. And at last, I'd like to wish everybody Happy Easter.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Michelle, or Joel?
Thanks.
Ms. Margaret?
I have several things, and one of them may be to invite somebody else to come up, if it's okay, to talk about the Paper Windows Project. We received a press release about a new photo contest, or photos with the city, and for a Flickr site, et cetera, so if Mr. Broughton can talk a little bit more about that, or whether Terry might.
Well, wait a minute, why are you asking him? I think I get, I get to decide if Terry comes up. Terry, would you, would you like to do it from your seat?
I'll do it.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Just, just speak up and you're good.
Paper Windows is a photographic vision of Bristol, and we try to make this very personal. We wanted to get individual community members involved, and we wanted to really see how our community sees our city. So, we came up with the idea of each month there'll be a, a new project title, and anyone of what age, no matter where you are, if you are a professional photographer, or just somebody who has a smartphone and loves the way these pictures look, we encourage everybody to participate. There's five judges, four of them are professional photographers. The fifth judge is our Facebook, and every picture that comes in each month will go on Facebook, and you can go to that particular picture and like it, and liking it is voting for it. At the end of 30 days, we will decide who the overall winner is, the four other judges will include Facebook, and they'll decide who the winner is. At the end of the 12-month period, we're going to take the first place winners and develop a calendar for the city, and we'll tell you more about that later, that's the basics.
Thank you, Terry, I appreciate that. Wonderful article in the paper, and glad that the word's getting out. Roger, you'll have to thank them down at the Harold Kuya, we appreciate the coverage. Now, Ms. Margaret?
Okay. From the library board, we have things coming up, and it's Lib, National Library Week in April, and it's going to be celebrated here with Adriana Trigiani, who wrote the Big Stone Gap books and many others, so hopefully folks will get out for Friday, the, April 13th, for special events, and then for her talk is on Saturday, April 14th, so hope people will enjoy doing that. Also, sometimes I announce the Beekner Institute that we're very fortunate to have with King College here, and Jan Karen is coming April 23rd, and she is the author of the Mitford series that's really popular, takes place in North Carolina, should be a very popular event, and encourage folks to attend that. And I'll take a little special preference on, I know King College's theater department is doing a little production of Frog and Toad, and if anybody has read those Frog and Toad books, either as a child or to their children, the Barter Theater's children's group did it last summer, and the production is pretty cute, so I highly recommend that, and that's on like the 19th, 20th, or something like that. Also, wanted to thank the schools for everything y'all do, and there's going to be an update of their strategic plan coming up here in April. This is the third year, the second year of implementation of the plan, and that's exciting to have that in effect, and glad to see a lot of us doing partnerships and working strategically as much as possible to move us forward. I was fortunate to go to a press conference on our Safe Communities with Mr. Broughton, and I knew a little bit about it, I knew a little bit about it when the application was first begun several years ago. Melissa Hamilton, who's a trauma nurse at Holston Valley Hospital, was the one who spearheaded, then some of our folks got involved to, since it affected all of Sullivan County. It's a big deal, it's the World Health Organization, we are the first city in Tennessee, we are the 19th city in the United States to receive this recognition. It's going to provide us opportunities, it also, to go to conferences, to share information with other self, safe communities, and also to, to brag about our status and, and what we need to do to maintain it. So, that's, that's a great honor, something we've worked hard for every day for our safe communities. And I wanted to put in a plug for, it's a town hall meeting on underage drinking. There's going to be two of them, the, of events for parents and caring adults in the community to start talking before they start drinking is one of the slogans from national organization. At Tennessee High, it's going to be with, it's Drug Awareness Week, happens to be a Drug and Alcohol Awareness Week, and it's also Prom Week with a lot of different activities. And on Thursday, 9th and 19th of April, there will be an event at 7 o'clock in the auditorium with a panel to help people learn about underage drinking and what the effects are, both physically for our young people, as well as legal consequences, and we continue to learn more what, what it does to our young people's brains, as well as what can happen with very serious consequences. So, pleased to, to have that, and the same kind of event is going to be at Virginia High on April 23rd, so people, folks have opportunity. Also, the event is to help adults and teens to be able to talk to each other about this important issue. And I think that's what I had to say. I see you have grace.
I do. Thank you, Margaret. Just a couple, just a couple brief things. There's a little flyer here that a lot of folks in the community belong to civic organizations, apart from, you know, their, their church activities and the other things that they do in the community. The two clubs that Joel and I belong to are, we're both civitans, and the, Joel belongs to the noon civitan club, and I belong to the evening civitan club, Twin City for me, and Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia civitan for, for Joel. There, there's going to be an attempt on, on May 5th, 2012, at 12 noon, to get as many people as possible down on State Street to set a record, Guinness Book of Records for the most people in two cities and two states at the same time. Be part of the Guinness Book of Records and Bristol history. The event is free, the civitans are accepting a donation of a dollar, but, but you're welcome to show up, and see how many people they can line up on State Street, and, and see if they can make the Guinness Book of World Records. So, we'll, we'll get in a, we'll get in a plug for the civitan clubs and, and any organization that's doing something to bring some recognition to our community here in Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia. We always appreciate them. Builders of good citizenship. And with that, one other thing, we recently had a race in this community. To everybody who, who turned out, to everybody who worked that race, Bill, to everybody in operations, Parks and Rec, Police Department, Fire Departments, I, I don't know how many folks in the city of Bristol, Tennessee realize that virtually everybody who works for the city works that race. You, it, it doesn't matter if, if you're pushing paper across a desk at City Hall, you're out there directing traffic. You're doing something to get those individuals in and out of our community and make sure that they have a great time. Numbers were down, there's a lot of talk about that. Mr. Broughton and I had a very interesting meeting last week with Mr. Bruton Smith and Jerry Caldwell, a very enlightening meeting, and, and I think the, the racetrack, BMS, and we in the city are going to do everything that we can to see that we get those numbers back up there and remain NASCAR's favorite track, and, and the huge boom to this community economically, and also the recognition that that racetrack brings to us. There is only one Bristol, there's no other place like, like racing here. But anyway, we appreciate Bill and, and Bob and Blaine and Terry, everybody, everybody of the city staff that, that pretty much works around the clock to make sure that everybody else comes and has a good time in Bristol. Folks, with that, even, even dragging out as long as we can, we are just now at 45 minutes, this is a very light agenda. Folks, we thank you, we appreciate your attendance this evening, and to all of y'all watching at home, this meeting is adjourned.